Good evening. I now call the November 6, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Let the minutes reflect that all school board members are here present and accounted for, including our student liaison, Mr. Paul Karnick. For our invocation, I'll now turn the mic over to Mr. Karnick.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Joining us tonight from Armstrong School of the Arts is Aiden Blunt to give our invocation. Take it away, Mr. Blunt.
Good evening. My name is Aiden Blunt. I'm a student, I'm a second grader, I'm a second grader in the Central School of Arts. I'm an academic senior, chair, chair of this school. Please stand for the standing board. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This evening, I would like to share a poem entitled "Raking Leaves," author unknown. I raked the leaves on our front lawn. It took all afternoon. I started around half past on and said, "I'll be done soon." But once I saw how more leaves fell, each time I made a pile, I quickly saw this outdoor tour was going to take awhile. And do I did what my dad said, a winner does to win. I studied that great pile of leaves and then I jumped right in.
Thanks, Aiden. So I want to ask you a couple of questions. First of all, what grade are you in at Armstrong School of the Arts?
Fifth grade.
Right. What kind of extracurricular activities do you do outside of school?
Baseball and football.
Very nice. What do you want to be when you grow up?
Professional baseball player.
What team would you want to play for?
The L.A. Dodgers.
Very nice. I'm a Nats guy myself, but it's fine. All out. Thank you. If there are any administrators or parents and family that are supporting Aiden tonight, I would invite you to please stand. And parents, family, and administrators, if there's any point that you want to leave during the meeting, you may do so. Thank you.
Aiden, before you all leave, do you want to introduce your parents and who, and all the people who are here to support you tonight?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Well, this is my mom right here. This is my dad. This is my brother, my sister, my Nano, my principal, my nurse, my assistant principal.
Okay, you brought them all. That's great. We appreciate your words and we appreciate you sharing Aiden with us tonight. Obviously, he has a big family and that's what it takes in this world to make sure that we raise successful children all around. So thanks again.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes, Ms. Henry.
You know, I have to, I feel like, I don't, I can't be a grandmother. I feel, what is the grandmother equivalent of a teacher? Because I'm so proud of two of my former students out there. Ms. Millicent Rogers was my, in my National Junior Honor Society not too many years ago. Mr. Blunt Senior there was a student at Phoebus and of course is used to winning, but was part of the very first championship football team, state championship football team at Phoebus High School and was a wonderful role model then, as he is now to his students. So we're very happy to have you all with us and very proud of you all the time. Glad Nano could be here, too.
Great job. Okay, thank you, Ms. Henry. Thank you, Mr. Karnick. As we move along with the, tonight's agenda, the next item is item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is Recognitions. And while we have 2.01 V.S.B.A. Academy Awards, Ms. Gole has decided to turn that over to the board chair and the superintendent. But prior to that, Mr. Superintendent, I'd just like to, on behalf of this board, say congratulations to our fellow school board member, Ms. Martha Mugler, who was successful in being elected to the Virginia General Assembly representing the 91st District. We are all really, really pleased because we all know that for decades she's in, and she has served the citizens and the students and the parents and this entire community in Hampton. But we also are very pleased that her reach now will be broader, but her skills and her passions will remain the same in that she has always been there for children. She's always stood steadfastly for education and she's always been someone who was collaborative and would listen to get things done. So we'll be doing something special at our December 4 meeting for her, probably to her chagrin, but we'll do it anyway. And we do want to make sure that she knows that we are very pleased that someone who has represented education in the state of Virginia and in Hampton for so long will have a broader impact, Ms. Mugler. So congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Would you like to say a few words before we move on?
Maybe only just a few. I just really want to thank my Hampton City Schools family for all the support in the race. It was a hard fought, long campaign, but I really, really have to say how honored I am to have had the support of this entire school board that I am fortunate enough to sit with at the, at our school board meetings. And we really have, we really have the best school board in the whole Commonwealth of Virginia and maybe the whole country. People just don't know it. But anyway, so I'm very honored to sit with you all. That's the bittersweet part of a win yesterday is that I'll have to vacate this chair at the end of December to go to Richmond and, and fight the good fight in Richmond. But I'm very excited about the, the impact that I think that I can have on public education at another level. So continue to represent the folks here in Hampton and outside of Hampton and Pecosa and New York County as well. But I'm really excited at what lies ahead, but it will be a little difficult to leave my, my friends up here.
Thank you. And in terms of vacating the seat, we have a process by which we will be looking to fill her unexpired term, but I will address that at the end of the meeting when we get to information items. Now, moving on with Recognitions, Ms., Dr. Smith, would you please join me on stage? We're going to recognize the achievement of our superintendent as well as some of our school board members. Our school board members and superintendent have the opportunity to earn what's called Academy Credits through participation in the Virginia School Board Association known as V.S.B.A. You participate by attending meetings, Academy Sessions, as well as through governance and service activities. Awards are based on credits earned and they range from a certificate of recognition to the highest honor, which is an award of distinction. The highest honor, the award of distinction, is given to someone who earns at least 84 credits in two years, have to earn 84. And the recipients get a starfish pin. I am so pleased to share that the recipient this year of that award of distinction for having acquired 86 credits in two years is our own Dr. Jeffrey Smith. It is my pleasure to present Dr. Smith with his award. Well, it is my pleasure for Dr. Smith to present me his award for me to present him the award. That's called teamwork. This says, "The Virginia School Boards Association Award of Distinction is presented to Jeffrey Smith for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the V.S.B.A. School Board Academy 2017 through 2019." Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Let's hear it for Dr. Smith.
I will now have the opportunity to also present some recognitions to the members of the board and the viewing audience as well. I will now present the board members with their awards. Ms. Cherry, it is my pleasure to present to you the award of honor and a gold pin for earning 65 credits in a two-year period. Congratulations to you. And there we have teamwork again, right?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I would ask at this time, if Mr. Jason Samuel, if you would come forward, we're going to present him with the award of honor and a gold pin for earning 71 credits in a two-year period as well.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
And this is quite representative of their commitment to governance and attending continuing education opportunities as members of the board. So it says a lot about each board member and their participation and how seriously they take the role of serving as a member of the board in the governance capacity. I would now like to recognize individuals with the award of excellence. And the recipients, the award of excellence is given to board members who earn at least 48 credits in two years. They receive a silver V.S.B.A. pin. We have three board members earning this award. I would ask that Ms. Phyllis Henry with 61 credits, Ms. Martha Mugler with 63 credits, and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse with 61 credits. If you would come forward, please.
Mrs. Mugler? Just a few more steps, Dr. Woodhouse. Congratulations to you, sir.
At this time, I would ask that Dr. Richard Mason to come forward. He is receiving the award of achievement for earning 35 credits in one year. He's also receiving a V.S.B.A. bronze pin. Dr. Mason will have the opportunity to earn a higher level as he completes his second year on the board. So you just didn't have the opportunity, sir, but now you have another opportunity. Thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, our vice chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore, is receiving the highest honor, award of distinction for the V.S.B.A., as well as the starfish pin for earning 90 credits in two years. Please join me as, again, we acknowledge all of our board members for their dedication and commitment to the young people of Hampton City Schools. Let's acknowledge our board members. Thank you so very much for your leadership. Madam Chair, that concludes the recognitions at this time and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And we also want to recognize your dedication to the students in Hampton City Schools as well. Our student representative, Paul Karnick, will also be attending these wonderful sessions held by V.S.B.A. and earning your credits as well. So we look forward to you representing Hampton City Schools in fine fashion as you always do. Thank you. Moving forward with the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda tonight consists of item 3.01, Personnel Report Number 1921, 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 2, 2019, 3.03, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 16, 2019, and 3.04, Receipt of Donations. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item 4, Superintendent and Staff Reports. And I'll now turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, I would ask that Dr. Cogiano, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, to come forward and he will provide an introduction for this particular presentation. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board. Joining us this evening for a presentation on an update regarding gifted education services in Hampton City Schools, we have two individuals. We have our Director of Advancement and Academic Enrichment, and that is Dr. Reginald Johns, and he will be accompanied by the Principal of Spratley Gifted Center, Mr. Paul Lawrence. And this time, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Dr. Johns.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Reginald Johns, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight before you. I would also like to introduce to you Mr. Paul Lawrence, and as previously indicated, he is the principal at Spratley Gifted Center. And so tonight, it is our pleasure to share with you an overview of the gifted services that we offer here in Hampton City Schools from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So this evening, we will look at, like I said, an overview of gifted services. We'll discuss our identification practices, how students are referred for different programs. We will also talk about how Spratley Gifted Center is a jewel that serves gifted students at a very high ability level. And we will talk about the training that is available for teachers of gifted students as well as the role that the community has in providing insight on the implementation of the gifted local plan. So as you see in our chart, we look very low for our gifted students starting in grade K. And in kindergarten through second grade, we have what is called a talent pool. And that talent pool is where we are throwing out a net to find students with gifted potential. And we identify these people through multiple criteria. So students as young as five years old are receiving interviews, we're looking at work samples, we're looking at gifted characteristics that are shown at home as well as at school to determine if we have students of gifted potential. And then by the time students reach third grade all the way through 12th grade, they go through a formal identification process. And that identification process involves things such as grades, abilities testing, in addition, those ratings from parents and teachers. And those are turned into a matrix score to determine whether or not this student is found eligible for gifted services as well as the level that services can be provided. So if a student is in 3 through 8, they have an opportunity to receive services as a gifted resource student, whether the student stays in their zone or neighborhood school. And they also have an opportunity to be in the gifted center, where the student is placed in an atmosphere where there are only gifted students around them to the left and the right. And every, and each teacher have received training in order to understand the needs of the gifted students as well as a way to design curriculum that fits their intellectual demands and needs. Once students leave the gifted center or matriculate into high school, there is an array of opportunities that provide challenge, from the Academies of Hampton to dual enrollment courses, to opportunities to participate in international baccalaureate program, as well as the Gifted Enrichment Cluster or Governor's School, the New Horizons Program for Science and Technology. We have a large number of gifted students, over 2,000 students in that K through 12 program. And we even have programs for students who are identified in visual arts. So like the other programs, people who are selected for the visual arts, we have art teachers providing ratings in terms of their artistic abilities. Students complete a portfolio where they indicate that they have artistic talents that are above their grade levels or their peers, as well as complete an essay where they indicate their intense passion towards the arts. Students at gifted, at the gifted center, Spratley, are now at 869. I do say now because our gifted program has what's called a rolling admission. So it is possible that a teacher is working with a student, let's say by October, and they identify that this student has exceptional ability. At any point in time, a student can be referred for gifted services. And then once that referral reaches the eligibility stage, we make a decision on the proper placement. Students at New Horizons are now 29 students who are in 11th and 12th grade, and there are 59 students who are participating in the Gifted Enrichment Cluster in Grade 10 at Kekatan High School. In order to find our gifted students, we do not just depend upon referrals of parents or teachers. We actually do what is called a district-wide screening. So we're throwing out a large net for students in first grade, students in second grade to try to find ability at a very high level. So we're looking at students with an age percentile at 85% or above, and then we use that indicator to contact parents to see if they would like to begin the referral process. In second grade, another district-wide screener is administered, and that is administered in the fall. And both of those scores, the N.N.A.T. and the COGAT, can be used for identification purposes for our G.I.A. or General Intellectual Ability Program. So over the last three years, we've seen a great increase in the number of referrals for students with talent potential. And it was in 2012 and 2013 that we actually began that first grade district-wide screener for the N.N.A.T. So as we continue to administer the test, we are able to identify and find additional students above when we only gave a screener on the second grade level. So once we identify students in first grade and second grade, they're placed in that talent pool process. And then by the end of second grade, we're able to make that decision, do we have a gifted student who is in front of us? Along with our increase in referral numbers for the talent pool, our K through 12 program is also seeing an increase. And so we're, I would say, seeing more than probably about 150 more referrals for our three through, K through 12 program. Even when we move up into the high schools, the increase or the interest in gifted education is evident. We are increasing the number of students who are referred for a summer gifted program called Residential Governor's School. And this is when students have an opportunity to participate in studies where they get to learn about humanities or have a mentoring experience, or when they get to learn more about marine science, or have a lot of different experiences. Some of these experiences are held locally in a college campus like at CNU. Others require students to go off to Radford or to Virginia Tech or to another university where they have an opportunity to be with other gifted students or high achieving students who have an interest in their area. I'm really excited about that number because we have a lot of hardworking guidance counselors who help publicize the event. They hold meetings and interest and informational meetings for parents and students. And they really encourage students to step out of their boundaries, step out of their comfort zone, to take a risk, to apply and be found eligible for services. Last year, we did have a top number of people who expressed interest, and we had more applications that we could submit to the Virginia Department of Education. So I'm very proud of that. Over the past two years, we've had an increase of not only referrals but acceptances. And we had seven more applicants who received invitations to participate than in the school year of 1617. In the resid, excuse me, I was getting ready to say residential. In the Regional Governor's School Program, New Horizons, we also have a robust number of students who apply as well as participate. We are the second highest district that has representation from the seven neighboring counties and cities municipalities here in Tidewater. And as you can see from the chart, our highest number of participants are in the biological science strand. This is a slide that shows more about the increase in referrals for gifted programs. And we also are beaming because we have a 95.6% increase in our Excel Art Program and interest in Excel Art. As mentioned earlier, our identification is based upon multiple criteria. It includes a nationally normed abilities test, teacher ratings, parent ratings, grades from the latest marking period, as well as a possibility for interviews and work samples. And in Spratley Gifted Center, our numbers for participation in the full day gifted program is on the increase. In our Zone Resource Program, students have an opportunity to be pulled from the regular classroom, work with a trained professional in gifted education, the gifted resource teacher, and receive experiences and investigations of units that increase their critical thinking and exposure to higher learning and acceleration. So for example, in fourth grade and fifth grade, students participate in a program called Hands-on Equations where they have an opportunity to learn algebraic principles at a very young age. And even in third grade, students have an opportunity to learn about number systems and how numbers can be represented in a variety of ways. So they're converting numbers from base 2 to base 5 to base 10 to base 60. The Middle School Program in the Gifted Resource also provides a unique opportunity for students to learn. Over the past two years, students have been learning about coding. And so the first year, they had over 10 hours of code training where they learned how to build a website. And then the second year, they had over 10 years, 10 hours of coding training where they learned about animation. So students have an opportunity to learn some- So students have an opportunity to learn something beyond the traditional curriculum that's offered to middle school students. In the second semester, they've been working on problem-based learning experiences where they invested grade the progressive era, and they learn things about the suffragists' movement as well as child labor laws. And now I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Paul Lawrence, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about Spratly.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start by thanking the board for inviting us to come and share with you tonight. It was really a nice opportunity for Dr. Johns and I to sort of reflect on our program and sort of take stock of all the things that we're doing across the division and at Spratly in particular. On this slide, we've shared our school mission statement, and that is to inspire and nurture the gifted learner, one student, one community across a lifetime. Tonight, I'm going to briefly kind of talk to you about the plans that we have in place to achieve that mission. We broke up our plan into four categories that we wanted to talk about tonight. The first one is acceleration, and that's when you give students the chance to move a little bit quicker through the curriculum than they would at some of our other schools. We've created some unique course offerings for students. These are classes that you can only find at Spratly, and we've worked with our students and our teachers to develop these curricula. We have a gifted instructional strategies plan, and Dr. Johns has done amazing work with our teachers to not only help them achieve gifted endorsement, but also to give them skills to use in everyday classes where they're taking curriculum and they're enhancing it with these gifted strategies and giving students unique experiences. And finally, we're piloting a program this year at Spratly called The Journey of Learning, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second. First, I'd like to talk about our acceleration track. This is new to Spratly this year. These are across our four core content areas. This year, we have, we're piloting a pre-algebra for fifth graders group. We have approximately forty students in there. They were identified through testing, through teacher recommendations, and then also parent recommendations. And they are doing an amazing job. They have a little bit of a modified version of the class then from our middle school students, but the students are doing well. I think that they're adjusting to the demands of a little bit more rigorous curriculum than they're used to, but I think that early signs are that it's going to be successful. In science, we've created a new curriculum in collaboration with the Science Curriculum Department called Advanced Life Science. And the reason why we wanted to do this is we wanted to give our students an opportunity that by the time they hit eighth grade, to be able to take a high school credit science class, earth science. In social studies, we're working with the Social Studies Department to look for some opportunities to give our students high school credit elective opportunities. And in language arts, this year, we have introduced creative writing for eighth graders. And we're hoping that that'll help to jumpstart that creative writing program. It's something that doesn't always get addressed with our high school students because they are such, they have such full schedules and so many activities. So we were working with the Language Arts Department to hopefully spark that program. If we can get students interested in creative writing in eighth grade, then creative writing too in ninth grade might take off, and then the journalism classes might follow. So that's our, our attempt to add some more students into that course. This next slide is going to sort of take us four years into the future, and if these pilots are successful and, and things go according to plan, in four years, our math students that are currently in pre-algebra will be taking Algebra II TRIG in eighth grade. Our science students will be taking, as I said, the earth science high school credit course in eighth grade. Social studies students, we would accelerate them. Normally, our fifth grade students would be taking a Virginia Studies. Starting next year, they would be taking U S one in fifth grade, U S two in sixth, taking civics and economics, a traditional eighth grade course they take in seventh grade, excuse me. And then during their eighth grade year, they'd be able to take that high school credit social studies elective. And there's a lot to choose from, and we're excited about that. And right now, in language arts, we just have the plan right now to continue offering creative writing as the accelerated class. The second thing we were going to talk about was the unique course offerings. And what we wanted to do was kind of list some of the things that we have here that are unique, almost all unique to Spratly Gifted Center. We've got a course in philosophy and logical thinking. And, you know, when we talk about critical thinking skills, if anyone's taken a philosophy course, you know that that's one of the best ways to really tap into our students' creativity, tap into their ability to sort of reason through complicated problems. And, and that's been a great class so far. If you come to our school, you'll see Aristotelian reasoning posters all up and down our hallway, and those are, those are great to see. We have a new class this year called Introduction to Programming and Robotics. When we saw how popular our Lego robotics team was at Spratly, we said, well, if this is something that, that kids love so much, why don't we turn it into an actual class? So we bought a few more robots, we recruited kids to come in, and now we have two sections of this class, and we'd love to expand it again more next year. We always like to go to the path of least resistance, and when kids are really psyched about being in a class, we try to go for that. We have musical theater this year. If anybody got a chance to come out and see our production of Beauty and the Beast last year, you saw that we had over a hundred kids in the production, working both onstage and offstage in tech. This is one of the best project-based learning experiences that you can have for a kid, is for them to be a part of a production like this. So we realized that that's a great energy that we also have at Spratly, and we wanted to tap into it with a musical theater class. And Ms. Spolley, our, our chorus teacher and our musical director, is just amazing. The time and energy she spends with kids, it's, it's made it a really valuable program this year. Creative problem solving, again, it's, it's similar to the philosophy class where students are given real-life problems and they're asked to come up with real-life solutions. Our digital media and entertainment arts, students are using Photoshop, they're using film editing software to create P S As, advertisements. Informational technology and fundamentals, that's more of a C T E class, and that is a high school credit class as well. And we're really proud of this one. Spratly's the only middle school offering econ and personal finance this year. You all remember when it came into being a graduation requirement a few years ago, and how parents were scrambling to figure out ways to fit it into high school schedules. And, and we know that our students are all going to be on the A P track, they're going to be college-bound students. And, and to alleviate that dilemma that parents were having about impact on G P A, we said, well, why don't we offer it at middle school? Let students get that class done in middle school, freeing up a section for them when they get to high school. So they'll be able to fill that with some of the academy choices that are out there, and also some of the A P classes that they're available to them. Community problem solving and All About Me are two new classes that our Health and P E department created this year. And those are from our Health and P E crew, who are just an amazing group of teachers, who wanted to do more with Health and P E than just some of the physical part of it. They, they also wanted to do some things that'll help students address their unique situation as gifted students. And that's what All About Me does. It, it talks to kids about anxiety and testing and what to do when you're faced with challenges. And it's an exciting class, and we're really proud of it. And finally, then, we were going to talk just for a second with you about Journey of Learning. And I wrote some stuff down about this, so I'm going to read it so I don't get it wrong. So, "The Journey of Learning is a year-long experience that's been inspired by a nationwide movement in education to give students the opportunity to discover their interests and talents through projects and work that they care about. This program looks to develop academic and five Cs skills," and I know you guys know them, but I'll read them out anyway. "Those five Cs are citizenship, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. And these are achieved through a coordinated series of cross-curricular lessons that culminate in an exposition that we're going to hold at Spratly in the spring." So I wanted to give you an example of what a Journey of Learning lesson looks like. And up here, you'll see, we asked our science teachers to generate big ideas for each grade level. So third grade's big idea is machines. Fourth grade's big idea is water. Fifth grade's big idea is oceanography. So an example of how one of our grade levels is working through the Journey of Learning is, our fifth grade students in social studies first spent time mapping the route that a piece of trash would take on waterways from Spratly Middle School Gifted Center all the way to the Atlantic Ocean. And they had to map that out using Google Earth. Next, in science, the students spent time collecting and categorizing the types of trash that they found in the creek behind Spratly. In math, they counted up all the different types of trash and created charts and graphs that demonstrated their data. And then in language arts, they're writing about their, their results, and they're also doing research to find out what are some ways that other localities are fighting to keep trash out of the oceans. So that's a, that's an example of a cross-curricular series of lessons that all deal with the same big idea of oceanography. Final projects will be generated by the students themselves, and we will allow them to harness their strengths to share what they've learned about their big idea this spring, and expect an invitation when we have those presentations. The gifted endorsement is something that we have an expectation for every teacher at Spratly. There's an expectation that within three years of hiring, they obtain their gifted endorsement. The courses for this endorsement are taught through Shenandoah University, and they're taught onsite at Spratly Gifted Center. And I know this because I've taken two this past year, and I'm about ready to take my third. Dr. Johns has taught us a class, an amazing professor. Dr. Ron Holloman, who is our assistant principal, is also teaching a class, and we've had other faculty from Shenandoah onsite too. They have to take four three-credit-hour classes and then experience a mentorship with a teacher that already has the gifted endorsement to, to obtain that endorsement And at Spratly, staff receives training to instruct gifted students. Dr. Johns provides training on ways to add depth and complexity to the H C S curriculum and making the thinking of students visible. Teachers are also given the opportunity to participate in professional conferences, like the National Curriculum Network Conference, the Gifted Summer Institute, sponsored by the Gifted Center at the College of William and Mary, and the Virginia Gifted Conference that was hosted in Richmond in October. We sent six teachers there just last October. And finally, these are examples of some of the gifted strategies that Dr. Johns has instructed our staff on, so that they can use them in their lessons. What you see over here in this picture is an example of a mind map. And what it does is it makes learning visible. It shows the thought patterns that students have as they think through problems. And maybe I convinced Dr. Johns to come up and talk about DeBono's hats, which is my favorite, just for a second.
So DeBono's hat was developed by Dr. Edward DeBono, and he worked with businesses in conflict mediation. So often, when people think about critical thinking, they think about analytical thinking, where you tear down someone's argument by finding a point where you find a flaw in their reasoning. Well, Edward DeBono believed that that was not the productive way to go about thinking, and he wanted to promote what is called parallel thinking. And that parallel thinking allows you to look at something through six different lenses or six different ways. So each hat represents a way of looking at an issue. So someone who automatically sees the negative points of a suggestion, they put on the black hat and they say, this is what I see as a problem, or this is a shortcoming. And then others in the group join in and say the shortcomings that they also perceive. But the group moves on, and they move on to a yellow hat. And that yellow hat is where people look at the positive or the benefits of an issue or an idea. And so you move through the different hats because you would like to examine an issue wholeheartedly. But I also believe that DeBono's Thinking Hats is very effective in research. So we want students to take information, but also make sense and meaning of this information. So I remember using DeBono's Thinking Hats as a gifted resource teacher. So I would show or explain to students about Ruby Bridges' first day of school, and they would see the difficulties that she had in terms of just entering the, the door. And they also saw that during the first year of her schooling, she was the only student in her classroom. And so after explaining or introducing that experience to my students, I said, if you had an opportunity to meet with Ruby Bridges as an adult, who would you ask her? And so students had to harness their own curiosity, their own interests, and say, I would ask what she didn't like about the experience. That's a great black hat question. I would ask what that experience taught her, how she benefited. That's a, a yellow hat question. I would ask how it felt to go through that experience and be the only one in your class. That's a red hat question, it taps on the emotions. So we use this type of structured critical thinking to open up divergent discussions and ideas for students.
Thank you, Dr. Johns. You get a taste right there what a great professor he was in the class. We learned so much. It's, it's really a great opportunity for us at Spratly as educators to learn even more about the profession by exploring some things that are new to us. And I think that is it for me. Thank you again so much. I'm going to hand the mic back over to Dr. Johns.
So we are taking a systems approach to professional development through the gifted department. As you saw in some of our previous slides, we're really increasing the number of students we're identifying through the N N A T and through the C O G A T. And I believe that's partly because every first-grade teacher, every second-grade teacher is receiving training on not only how to administer the test, but what that test actually means. So if you have a student who is performing at the ninety-fifth percentile in quantitative, how do you take that information and run with it as an instructor? Or if you have a student who has a high spatial ability that may be earmarked by the N N A T, how do you take that information and begin to use that strength in reasoning in the everyday instruction? We also completed what I call inter-rater reliability training. So some of the instruments that we use may have what you would call a, a subjective way of grading. So we took instruments that we actually administered, we shared responses that are common amongst children, and so we talked amongst ourselves as a department, what do we consider to be a superior rating? What type of response is out of the box or would show divergent thinking or critical thinking? And we also provide training so that teachers have an opportunity to integrate gifted resource or gifted instructional strategies into their resource program. Last but not least, I did want to touch a little bit on our gifted local advisory committee. We have a wonderful array of parents, community members, business leaders, and representatives from the different parts of our gifted department who meet three times of year, three times a year, and also at the end of the year, provide the school board and the superintendent with a report on the affairs of gifted services. So we look at the practices in light of the gifted local plan that we promised to show, or we promised to administer gifted services, and we see how our practices align with the plan. So as you can see here, these are the members who actually submitted the last local advisory report last year, and every year, we're looking for brand-new members. So our members seem to grow up with the, with the program. So once again, we're looking for people who have graduated out. So we're looking for the higher education, not the higher education, but the eleventh and twelfth grade gifted parent, and then we're looking for those who are just coming in into the talent pool. Thank you very much, and I am willing to entertain with Mr. Lawrence any questions.
Okay. Thank you both for that wonderful presentation. Are there any questions by board members? Mrs. Samuels?
I have one question and a comment. The question is, what is the average student-to-staff ratio at Spratly Gifted Center?
So it, it varies from grade to grade in elementary school. At the third grade level, it's about twenty to one. In the fourth grade level, it's twenty-seven to one, and in the fifth grade level, it's also twenty-seven, twenty-eight to one. When we broke down the numbers for middle school, we did it not by grade level because there's such a variety of classes and the, the schedule becomes a little bit more complicated. But I can confidently say that it's about twenty-five to one is the average. We do have some classrooms where we would have thirty kids in a We do have some classrooms where we would have 30 kids in a class, but if a teacher has a 30, that means they also have a 20. So it all averages out to about 25 a section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And I have more data on that, too, I can send you if you need it.
Thank you so much, Paul. And the comment that I would like to make is the information that you shared about the LEGO program that Spratley has. And I am delighted to say that we have, the school-age program that I serve as a program manager, has actually extended that LEGO program to the after-care program to our students at Spratley, and they're very excited. And we have a group of young people that are so engaged in that LEGO where, you know, they, it's just phenomenal, some of the structures that they can build with these Legos. And so since we've done that over the last two years, we've also extended that to the other elementary schools that we serve. So it all started at Spratley, and we took that program and expanded it to the other schools that we serve. So thank you.
I just wanted to shout out for Josh Veder and Deanna McNeil, who run that program over there and do so much for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any comments from board members this way? Yes, Dr. Mason?
A couple of things. Just kudos to the professional school counselors that do a lot of work with you guys in getting students ready for the residential governor's school program. That's always good to hear that they are definitely involved in that process. And then also, I know most people tend to think that the gifted program or gifted child is able to just handle more rigor, but it's really about the offerings and the course offerings. So kudos to you all in the course offers. I was excited to see Slide 20 where you started talking about the different courses that you offer, even getting into the All About Me class incorporating physical education because sometimes when you talk about gifted kids, PE is one of those things that they're really not into. But you found a way to really incorporate those things to pull them into that process. So definitely, kudos there. One quick question. I know in a past life, folks used to use the Otis Lennon as far as testing for gifted services. We gotten away from using that in the area of identifying gifted kids?
Actually, we have not.
Okay.
So what I share with you, the N-N-A-T, the COGAT, those are classroom-wide, district-wide screeners administered by the classroom teacher.
Okay.
So if we see a gap between scores, maybe they scored in the 95th percentile on one test but scored on the 80th percentile on another test, it could have been a bad morning for the student. So we have gifted resource teachers on a regular basis, provide additional abilities testing, and that's one of the tests that they administer.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Anyone, yes, Ms. Henry?
Talk to me about, not the class size, but the number of groups per grade level we've got. So I'm a third grader. How many third-grade classes are there? How many groups of third graders are there?
So we have four third-grade teachers, approximately 80 students. So that works out to about 20 per each teacher. Of course, students rotate back and forth between teachers. So, yeah. And then in fifth grade, we have, excuse me, fourth grade, we have five teachers.
Okay. I just, you see, the thing is, and I'm so glad you changed the title, because I think sometimes we think gifted education, we're going to pour more, we're going to open up the kid's head because he's smart and he can read fast, and we're going to pour more in, and we're going to tamp it down real good and firm. And rigor is not what this is about. It's about creativity and options for thinking and creative problem-solving and putting on those different hats and all those good things. So very many things about the report I was very pleased to see, particularly that our first screening is nonverbal because historically, we have over-identified early readers as gifted. And you can be, I have a couple grandchildren who are early readers, and I love them to death, but I'm not sure they're gifted. They're interesting, but I'm not sure they're gifted. And the other thing is, the reason I asked about different groups is that kids are not gifted at everything. I'm not a very gifted poetry writer. I'm a pretty good essayist, but I'm not a good poetry writer, and I don't know that I'm gifted in math a bit. So I think, excuse me, I have to turn this off. This is reminding me to take some old lady medicine that I'm not going to take now. It's real important that we don't force kids to be accelerated at everything they do and that they have some options in the things they love and that you're promoting the things they love. I think that's wonderful. Rolling acceptance is a really good thing because it may take a few years before the child actually lands up in a class where the teacher has all their antenna out and realizes that this little kid who sits in the corner and doesn't say anything is because he's bored to death, and you finally found him something he was interested in. How are we doing on, I used to say the way you got to be identified as gifted is you had an aggressive, middle-class mommy. And I think that's still the way you get to be identified frequently. But I like the nonverbal and the widescreen. Are we doing better at identifying kids across all kinds of levels and ethnicities and everything than we used to be?
Sure. So our actual number of gifted students receiving services is up. It's increasing. And the numbers, particularly in Spratley, of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch is on the increase or the rise. So that means we're looking at students from a diverse number of socioeconomic conditions, and they aren't being disqualified because of family income or association. So we're really looking for gifted characteristics that may be unique for students who come from an area of poverty, or gifted characteristics for someone who is an early reader and has a great acquisition of language. So we're doing a lot in regards to taking these numbers for students who hit our radar, and if they don't make the gifted program the first time, I put them on what's called a look-for list. And so at the end of the year, I say, "These are all the students who were identified to have high reasoning ability at the 85th percentile or above." And then in June, I want to know, "Are you in the program? Are you not in the program? What kept you out of the program? Did you have low grade performance? Did you have a low teacher rating? Did you have a low parent rating?" Simply because half of our indicators are based upon parent perception and teacher perception. Half of our indicators are based upon student performance on grades as well as on ability testing. So if I see that a student has high performance in grades and in ability testing, I'm going to give them another look when they get into third grade. The great thing about the third grade is that your test is read by you. You move at your own pace. You don't have to wait until your teacher is ready to move on to the next question. And so we're really taking not only one look at students, but additional looks at students. And we're trying not to wait upon parent referral to put these students on our radar.
Okay. Oh, that's wonderful. I'm so excited about your whole report. It's wonderful that we're sending children off to more of the governor's school. I know we used to be to the point that we sent the maximum number we were allowed to send as applications and had some alternates lined up in case. I wondered if we have considered doing some summer in-house things, particularly at Mr. Lawrence's level, in that there are gifted modalities, and there are some of those kids that are in your wide net that don't come out as 97th percentile test takers, but they're, they have leadership gifts, they have expressive gifts and so forth. And those are pretty hard to meet if we can't put them in the pool of the other children in-house at Spratley Gifted. But it would seem to me that some summer institutes for that kind of thing, particularly in the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade level, would be wonderful if we could pull those off because when they get older, they find their own way to find those things. If I'm getting in Model UN or whatever it is that meets those needs, but it would be nice to, you know, and the physically gifted people find a way with varsity sports or with whatever they're doing, and they find a way to do that. The art students are being served exactly how now at this point?
So we have what's called the Excel Art Program.
But physically, how are they served?
A few years ago, we bus students to Spratley to receive instruction all day long. At this present time, every art teacher is an Excel Art teacher. So they hold the classrooms in the school where the students attend for an hour each week if they are in the elementary level, an hour every other week if they are in the middle school level.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really want your big idea stuff to be transmitted to Mr. Cagiano, Dr. Cagiano's group, and the CIA won't have to keep it a secret. But that kind of stuff is the best project-based learning you can do, and it's an easy thing for a team to adopt a big idea for the theme and have the projects go through for the team, and they just need to go visit and do what they're doing because that's exactly what works for teams and project-based learning. You're doing great. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Karnick.
Thank you, Dr. Johns and Mr. Lawrence for being here. As a former student of the Spratley Gifted Center from grades third through eighth, and a student of this past summer of the summer residential governor's school program myself, I can say that what you all are doing is working. So I have several questions for you guys, just for the, to see how the student side of Spratley Gifted Center especially is being conducted at present. It's been a few years since I've been in there, so just some clarification. So the, in the gifted resource programs in all schools with the social-emotional learning focus, is that in all grades? Is it just in middle school or is it just at Spratley?
That's a great question. Every year, our curriculum writers receive training, not only from Dr. Johns, but also from the CIA department. And this past year, our curriculum has been intertwined with social-emotional learning and approaches. So it's particularly in the gifted resource curriculum, those lessons of social-emotional learning have been weaved in for the K all the way up through eighth-grade curriculum.
Very good. And for the, I just want to take a look at the acceleration, especially putting those fifth-grade students on the pre-algebra track one year earlier than they usually were when I was at Spratley. So when I was there, and not to get too much into the past, but the Algebra readiness diagnostic test that was administered in the spring of fifth grade, is that, you mentioned testing, is that now being administered in the spring of fourth grade to determine that eligibility for that pre-algebra track in fifth grade?
Yes, that was one of the factors that we used to determine. One of our teachers created a matrix, and that was one of the elements of the matrix was that algebra test that you referred to.
Okay. And at the end of grade five in that pre-algebra class, will those students have the opportunity to take the SOL for pre-algebra?
Absolutely, yeah.
Very good. And the philosophy and logical thinking class, is that a gifted elective?
It is. It's one of our gifted electives.
Okay. And what kinds of things are they studying in philosophy and logical thinking?
So I think that they're doing sort of a survey of some of the greatest hits of philosophers. They've done the Greek philosophers already this first quarter, and then I'll have to check with Ms. Laba to see what's coming up next.
All right, very good. So just to take a look at the student, or, excuse me, the local advisory committee for the gifted program division-wide, has there been any consideration given to maybe future student slots on the local advisory committee, maybe to students of the gifted enrichment seminar at Kikatana High School?
That would be a great idea. I will look into that.
And one last question. The journey of learning that is being conducted at Spratley, is that sort of, does that prepare students to, for the project-based learning initiatives that they'll undertake in their academies in high school? Is that the focus of it, or is the focus more on a holistic approach?
One of the reasons why we called it the journey of learning, as you hear that statement, it's not the destination, it's the journey. And so that, those five C skills are sort of built in the journey. They're working with teammates, they're doing a lot of research, they're having to problem-solve. We're giving them a lot of freedom to sort of pick the issue that they want to concentrate on. So we're hoping not only will it help them with the academy experience, but, you know, life experience, too.
All right, very good. And I heard you mention that there are four third-grade teachers right now at Spratley. So is that, there's one teacher dedicated to each subject area, English, math, science, and social studies? Is that the case?
Well, actually, our third grade is split into two teams. One teacher does English and social studies, the other teacher does math and science, and then they flip-flop those kids in the afternoon.
Okay, nice. And for the pre-algebra track, is it still like a two-track system with Course One honors or Course One for students who do not necessarily meet the criteria for pre-algebra placement at first? Is it, so it's still the same way it's been done in the past?
Yeah, we'll still, we'll still keep that, the old track in place because, as was mentioned before, not every gifted student is necessarily a gifted math student. So we like to have opportunities for all levels of math students, but what we're trying to do is raise the ceiling a little bit of what opportunities are there for students who can achieve.
Good. So the acceleration opportunities, those aren't necessarily hard and fast. If I were to put my child in Spratley, that doesn't mean they, if they aren't mathematically gifted, for example, they wouldn't have to take Algebra II in eighth grade. Is that what I'm getting from what you're saying?
That's absolutely correct, yeah. It's going to be a decision that's made with parents and teachers, and the children themselves, too, have to be willing to undertake the challenge before we would put them in there. And then they always have the option of coming back down to fifth-grade math if they find that it's, you know, it's too much for them, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, those are some excellent questions, Mr. Karnick, I tell you. Appreciate that. Any other questions from board members? Thank you again for a very inspiring report. It was one of the ones that we like to hear that speaks to taking it to another level, and that is exactly what you've done and what you're doing at Spratley. I do have one quick question, though, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I know we talked about teacher identification and parent identification and coursework identification, but I'm wondering how you addressed this group of students. Years and years ago, I read a book called The Black Boy Jungle, and it was a book basically about a classroom in a school district in Chicago. And these students were not kids who would have been identified by their parents, they would not have been identified by their teachers, and they were not getting good grades. And instead of putting them out, some very smart administrators pulled them out and tested them and found out that they were not only bored, but they were gifted.
Great.
So how do we find those children?
That's a great question. One of the benefits of working with a talent pool is that you are not using grades as a measurement of student identification. So a student could answer a question in an interview in a clever way, and that can work in his favor. A student can test well, that can work in their favor. A student can show divergent ways to solve a problem on a work sample, and that can work in his or her favor. So especially in the primary ages, we do not have to solely depend upon classroom performance. We can do performance in front of a gifted resource teacher or with a trained professional to identify that gifted potential.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And again, thank you for an excellent report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Our next report will be by Ms. Dorch, our Chief Financial Officer, and that will be our financial report. Ms. Dorch?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure tonight to present the September 2019 monthly report. Our revenues at the end of September totaled $27 million. Our expenditures and incomances totaled $55 million, and we're approximately 4.5% higher than the previous fiscal year, and that is due to the school division paying our debt service fee to the city sooner than we did in the previous year. We've also included in the report our transfers to and from the classification for technology for your review. And we are currently looking at our fall enrollment numbers, and we're looking at those to see what the impact will be on the budget, and we'll provide an update at a later school board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members for Ms. Dorch?
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Our next item of business is number five, the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our speaker is Stephanie Afanjie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come this evening to address the school board on a very positive note. Uh, my name is Stephanie Jackson Afanjie and I am a very proud Hampton resident. I have, was born and raised in Hampton, um, and I was raised and I attended Hampton City Schools for my entire academic career. I graduated from Hampton High School, can't crush a crab. Um, I have two children as well, William and Jada, who also attend Hampton City Schools. And, um, I have a third who will be school-aged soon enough. So I'm very invested, um, enormously invested in the outcomes of our city's public school system. The news of 100% accreditation with no conditions has energized me. I am extremely proud of, um, this accomplishment and I'm more proud to be a Hamptonian today because of it. What an incredible accomplishment that this is. Does this seal of approval matter? Absolutely it does. Accredited schools assures the same quality educational standards for all students. This is especially important for those students who may be marginalized by socioeconomic challenges to include homelessness, unemployment, poverty, poor living conditions, limited access to resources, violence, substance use, and crime. 100% accreditation ensures that the educational career for these very students is acceptable, ensuring these students are competent to test with their peers from other geographical areas. Accreditation assures our system behaves ethically and employs suitable quality assurance standards for all students. I'm especially excited about this as, as I have owned a family-serving business, family restoration services in the city of Hampton for over 12 years now. And I have been very privileged to serve many of Hampton students who unfortunately sometimes are impacted by these human conditions. Many times, these students did not have many positive educational outcomes, often attending zone schools that were unable to meet accreditation standards. Unaccredited schools often lose funding, as you guys know, um, that support school improvements, lose quality teachers, and often cause working-class families to relocate to other school districts. But today, I am extremely proud that Hampton City Schools' leadership is committed and values quality education for all our Hampton City School students, believing that every student deserves the same opportunities to quality educational resources, school buildings, technology, instructors, and administrators, and you guys made it happen. The focus on performance outcomes, school-to-work initiatives, dropout rates, and our Hampton City School academies has given these students with these challenges more options, more support, and recognizes the differing abilities of our student population. Now, not one student must experience a subpar learning environment. High-revenue-producing businesses will be more attracted to our area, confident that their own children will be guaranteed a high-quality education. This means more tax revenue for Hampton, which directly supports greater quality education for all our students. Home buyers consistently rate quality education as a reason for them to move into our area. This can bring more jobs for our jobless and more living options for our homeless. This seal of approval absolutely matters for all our students, but I am especially elated about the increased opportunity for these students. Our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, to board chair, Ms. Anne Stephens Cherry, vice chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore, the entire Hampton School Board, all our Hampton City Schools administrators, our youth, our students, teaching professionals, and all Hampton City Schools staff members, thank you. Your hard work, commitment to the absolute best for all Hampton City School students is phenomenal. And our Hampton City students are most fortunate for it. Thank you to the school board and congratulations to Mrs. Martha Mugler for your, um, 91st delegate seat. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and thank you for serving our school system. And I'm very proud of the 100% accreditation of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Um, Bowers. Have you received any other?
I have not.
Okay, that takes care of that portion of our program. Now, moving on to, um, the next agenda item is item six, deliberation. It consists of 6.01, VSPA Proposed Legislative Positions, 6.02, Revision of School Board Policy IC, School Year/School Day, 6.03, Revision of School Board Policy IGBI, English as a Second Language, 6.04, Revision of School Board Policy IGCA, Remedial and Summer Instructional Program, 6.05, Revision of School Board Policy IGAI, Character Education, 6.06, Revision of School Board Policy IGAH, Family Life Education, 6.07, Revision of School Board Policy IGAD, Career and Technical Education, and 6.08, Revision of School Board Policy IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. And I think we'll begin with 6.01, VSPA Proposed Legislative Positions, because that is going to be presented by the vice chair, Mr. Joe Kilgore. And I think all board members have been presented with those amendments. Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I've done in past years, my, my plan here is to, uh, run through the VSPA Proposed Legislative Positions for 2019. I will not be as fun as Dr. Johns and Mr. Lawrence, but I'll do my best to move through it quickly. Um, I know all of you all received hard copies of this. I'll, I'll just go through it so you understand the positions and also so the folks viewing at home understand the new positions that VSPA is proposing. What happens at our annual conference is 133 members form a delegate assembly of local board members and they vote to adopt these positions or not. And that determines the approach that the association takes in addressing education issues for the coming year. Um, these legislative positions are permanent and remain in full effect until their intent is accomplished or, um, or until revised or deleted by official action. So what you're getting is just the new and amended positions. All the ones from prior years are still in effect unless they've been, uh, deleted by official action. So, uh, this evening, we have seven amended proposals and six brand-new proposals. So, uh, the first one, um, is an amended proposal and it's, um, its title is Assessment Reform and Accountability Reform. And just to give you some gist on the, the current position, the legislative position supports establishing, establishment of a balanced assessment and accountability system using a more complete picture of a student learning by measuring both achievement, such as SOL test, and state-approved measures of individual student growth over time. Uh, this proposal also supports the reduction in the number of SOL tests to permit reallocation of assessment dollars and instructional time. Uh, the proposed amendment, um, to this proposal adds the following sentence at the end. "All end-of-year course standard of learning assessments may be performance-based." Uh, the rationale behind that is that, um, this change in wording stems from a comment made by the Virginia Secretary of Education back in April where he recommended moving away and eventually replacing the current SOL testing model with, uh, project-based assessments. The second proposal is a new proposal. Um, and its title is State School Health Advisory Committee. Uh, this proposal states, uh, very succinctly, "VSPA supports establishing the State Health Advisory Committee consisting of no more than 20 non-legislative health, comma, mental health, and educational professionals and parents to advise the Board of Education, the Governor, and the General Assembly on one, the role of employees in public elementary and secondary schools in providing health and mental health services, and two, the need for training associated with delivering such services." The rationale behind this new proposal is because there's legislation every year in the General Assembly on this subject. And this committee would be able to study the request and make recommendations and their implications to school divisions. The third proposal is also a new proposal titled Mandatory Reporting of Misdemeanors and Status Offenses. This proposal states, "VSPA supports eliminating mandatory reporting of misdemeanors and status offenses by students to law enforcement for school-based incidents." The rationale behind this proposal is that this would make reporting of misdemeanors and status offenses to law enforcement discretionary. Currently, Virginia Code requires schools to report a wide level of conduct and over 40 offenses to police. Virginia ranks first in the nation in the rate of school-based referrals of students to law enforcement. This proposal would allow staff to exercise professional judgment and safe, and safeguard positive school climate. It would also reduce referrals, arrests, and court involvement. The fourth proposal is also a new proposal titled Disorderly Conduct for School-Based Offenses. This proposal states very succinctly, "VSPA supports decriminalizing disorderly conduct for school-based offenses." The rationale behind this proposal is that Virginia's disorderly conduct statute criminalizes or criminalizes highly subjective student behavior issues that often would not be considered criminal outside of schools. The greatest racial disparity in school discipline can be found in highly subjective code of conduct violations. The fifth proposal is an amendment and it's entitled Graduation and Completion Index and Dropout Rate calculation for English learners. This amendment recommends modifying the position to make English learners eligible for a one-time adjustment out of the four-year graduation and completion index and dropout rate calculation if they have not yet completed four semesters of enrollment in Virginia public schools. The rationale behind this is that Virginia has an ever-increasing number of older students entering Virginia schools with both limited English language skills as well as limited formal schooling. The proposed amendment would help to adjust the calculation to better reflect where many English learners start their schooling in Virginia, as well as how long it takes to acquire both English language skills as well as content knowledge. The sixth proposed proposal is an amendment to an existing one titled Education of Teachers. The current legislation position, the, the current legislative position lists numerous recommendations of how the state can support the need for developing excellent teachers in the Commonwealth. The amendment recommends, recommends adding language to better coordinate credentialing standards between local school divisions and institutions of higher learning. The rationale being, uh, this amendment builds on the groundwork established with the passage of Senate Bill 1575 in the General Assembly earlier this year. So it just lists numerous things that we can do, uh, to, uh, develop teachers. The seventh proposal is an amendment to an existing position entitled "Amend the Standards of Quality to Include Dedicated Funding for Mental Health Student Support Positions and School Security Personnel." The amendment adds wording to give local-based authority and flexibility to determine the school health, mental health, and counseling models that most appropriately meet a division's needs via local policies and staffing. The rationale behind it is that, uh, comprehensive efforts to ensure student safety and well-being must include resources devoted to mental health. But divisions must approach this in a way that are appropriate to them without prescriptive mandates. The eighth amendment, uh, is entitled Scheduling of Elections. Since, uh, the primary location of polling places in Virginia are public schools, the amended wording, uh, adds wording that supports legislative changes at the state and national level to shift voting activities from weekdays to weekends in order to enhance school safety and safeguard the operational effectiveness, effectiveness of schools. Uh, and the rationale is that one is, is embedded within the statement itself. The ninth proposed legislative position is again an amendment entitled Expansion of Virginia Human Rights Act. The current legislative position supports the expansion of classification in the Virginia Human Rights Act code to include gender orientation and gender identity and to allow school boards to expand their policies in a similar way. The amendment changes the wording in this position from gender orientation to sexual orientation. Uh, the rationale is that, uh, VSPA believes the Commonwealth should do all it can to prevent individuals from discrimination. The tenth amended proposal is entitled Unexpended Funds. The current legislative position states, "Unexpended funds at the end of each fiscal year should be retained in the existing contingency fund line item, not subject to reappropriation as new fiscal year funds, instead of being returned to the local appropriating bodies." The amendment changes the wording in the position from contingency fund line items to school fund balance. The eleventh proposed position is a new position entitled Attendance Requirements for Accreditation. And this position states, "The General Assembly should direct the Board of Education to remove attendance under, uh, Virginia Administrative Code 20-Dash- to remove attendance under Virginia Administrative Code 20-131-380 as a measure of school quality for accreditation. The rationale behind this is establishing a measure of accreditation where missing 10% or more of the school year, regardless of reason unfairly discriminates against schools with high transient minority populations, at-risk students, and working students. The 12th new proposal position is entitled Modify Requirements for Advanced Student Diplomas. The current position has requirements for scientific sequence for an advanced diploma, advanced studies diploma, should be changed to permit either completion of courses in three specific disciplines from among earth science, biology, chemistry, or physics, or the completion of advanced sequences of courses in two of the disciplines. For example, pre-AP biology, pre-AP chemistry, AP chemistry, and AP biology. The rationale behind this proposed policy position is the current requirements require courses from three different sciences. Changing the requirements will allow students to earn the advanced studies diploma while taking their studies of fewer disciplines to the highest level possible. And the final legislative proposed position is a new one entitled Standards of Quality and State Education Funding for Support Positions. And this position reads as follows. The V S B A supports eliminating the state's arbitrary cap on funding for support positions, which would help more directly link state funds with actual local staffing needs and costs. Rational behind this proposal is that with the significant increase in mental health and other wellness challenges for students, critical services provided by schools should be funded accordingly. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
What I need from this board is direction as to how you would like me to vote on these. I will tell you that the Legislative Positions Committee voted on 11 of the 12 proposed positions unanimously, and two of them had a single no vote. So the committee was in support of all of these. What I need from this board is consensus as to whether you want me to support these or not.
First of all, let's see if there are any questions about any of the ones that you, you read. Are there any questions from board members about any of those? I'll tell you the one about the, the reporting of the crime. I mean, the, that's interesting. Was there a lot debate about that one?
The, um, this handbook comes without any record of the committee meeting. So effectively, what you receive from me is all I have. There's not much detail. I mean, I will tell you that I've, I've heard of most of these through other means as far as, you know, reports that we get or articles that we see or workshops that we go to. And there's definitely, you know, you'll even hear from Congressman Scott. And you've, you've heard from other national figures that talk about the pipeline to prison and phrases like that.
Right, right.
To where we have, if you look back over time, they have increased by Virginia code the things that we are required to identify to the police. And, and you will hear where once something gets into that pipeline, it's a very hard pipeline to get out of.
Right.
For, for some students. So I believe, you know, they want to put that discretionary decision-making back into the professionals in the building to deal with things on a case-by-case basis. And they are, they want to support legislation that would do that.
Okay, thank you. Any?
I just wanted to-
Ms. Henry.
Add to that, that discretion, local discretion is really critical if you're gonna. It's very frustrating as an administrator if you're dealing with a situation and you're told this is what you must do. We're told what you must do by policies of this board is sometimes bad enough, guys. Sometimes you'd like to be able to say, well, I want to handle this differently, but policy says you will refer this to long-term suspension, or you will refer this to a 10-day suspension. If you have to also are mandated to refer something to the police, that real, you know, individual situations need to be treated individually. And, and I think, heavens, I think the judicial system is understood now that mandatory sentencing, you sometimes get yourself in a box you didn't want to get yourself into. And this doesn't mean that, that any situation in a school cannot be referred to the police. And there's, you know, you, but you want to have some discretion on a lot of situations. And I think that disorderly conduct is one, you know, what's disorderly conduct? I pushed over a desk in the room? That's disorderly conduct. But do I, is that something I can keep you after school for, for two days? Or is this something we have to refer to the police? I, I think it's very important to have local discretion. I, I think many, many things need to be referred to the police. And when that situation happens, you know it. You know this is something that's serious, it needs to be referred. And parents can always refer if they feel something is, is significant enough. They can refer it to, to the police department as well. But I don't think it should be required.
And I, I will tell you that, that was the, the fourth proposal on disorderly conduct. You know, I, I summarize this stuff to really condense it. But if you go to the copy that I gave you, there's, there's quite a bit of additional information.
Right, I'm looking at that.
Very specific information about disorderly conduct and how subjective it can be.
Extremely.
But how, you know, impactful it can be if you get referred to the police and next thing you know, something that wouldn't have been a crime outside of school suddenly has you in a referral and arrest situation and in the court system.
Yeah, good point, Mr. Kilgore. So based on what you want from us.
I just want you all to smile and say, it sounds good.
I'm not happy, excited about the one about the, the attendance not being significant in.
You know, and I think if you look at the one from attendance, you're gonna find that these proposals are submitted by one of the 133 divisions in the state of Virginia. And so sometimes the proposals come because they have a, a different situation than we do. If you, for instance, either a transient population, at-risk students, or, or, or something like that may be a significant issue for them, and it drives the proposal. But, and that's why.
But that also is, it, it can be an, an out for, you know, I don't have to really, you know, those, I don't have to hunt down that child who doesn't come to school. I have real mixed feelings about this one, but.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I looked at it and I said, I wonder how they came up with the 10%. There's magic about that. You know, so you-
10% is one out of 10 kids, you know, that's-
Well, it's, it's 10% of your attendance.
If you, if you miss 10% of the, the days of school, we, we go take you to court.
But is, you know, what we don't have here, is there research behind that 10%? Could it be 11%? Or should it be 8%? Do you, how do you? So it's one of those things that they threw into the accreditation calculation. And, you know, I, I guess, I guess you could argue whether or not it has value. It is, it was one that was proposed by Prince William County. And the committee was unanimous in its vote for it. I'll tell you that.
Is there, is there, of course, these are, these are the way they are. But if they're, if somebody were working with the legislator, I would like them to say, if you're going to eliminate it as a requirement for accreditation, that makes sense to me on some level. But I think it should be, you know, there were a lot of things that used to be part of the school report card. And people could look up and tell about your school district some things, you know. And, and this is one of these things that ought to be on a school report card kind of report out that's public, that's really easy for the public to know about rather than maybe an accreditation standard.
You know, I also look at this one slightly as we're all sort of, we've heard many times that if you're not in school, you're not going to be learning. We work very hard to identify kids that have absentee issues and try to resolve those before they impact the academics. So I think there's, there's things that every school division wants to succeed. And so it's embedded. It's just if, if you have a student that falls out of this category for some reason, it impacts your accreditation, even if you've been working really hard.
Mrs. Sam, it just looked like you had a point.
And, and Joe brought up a, a great point as it relates to, you know, this legislative proposal. Because you have to, you have to also take into consideration the population that is being served at the particular school division. Whereas in Hampton, we have our base initiatives and so forth that is offered through the Department of Human Services. So we have those, I firmly believe that we have provided resources to mend our bill, our bill that gap where children who are faced with currency issues or concern receive the supports. Then you have other school division who does not have the support as such. And so I think that, you know, I would support this legislative proposal. I, I certainly would. Secondly, the one that I also would like to speak on is the modify, modify requirement for advanced study. As you all know, I have a junior in Hampton City Schools. And low and behold, we were informed that she has to take earth science. And Alana is like, and, and this is because she is pursuing an advanced diploma and because now she has to have the four.
She only has to have three.
Yeah. And so now with this, it, it is gonna make sure, it's gonna assist or help other students that doesn't have to take the four principles of the science, biology, and so forth. So, you know, I, I definitely support this now. So Alana is gonna be in a classroom with freshmen because she wants to have an advanced diploma.
Got it, okay. So looking down this end of the table, is there anything that just gives you heartburn about any of these proposals?
No.
Any major heartburn? Yes, Mr. Karnak.
Well, no heartburn, but related to the proposal 12, the modifying, the modified requirements for the advanced studies diploma, has there been any record taken of what qualifies as pre-AP coursework? Is that just any credit hours earned toward a science that is at the AP, or not at the AP, at the honors or standard level? Or is it a significant, specific designation?
They didn't, like I said, they, they didn't provide any more than what you have in front of you. And, and again, this is V S B A's position that they will use to direct them with interactions with the General Assembly. So they might suggest that the General Assembly do this. They might use it in trying to help the General Assembly craft other legislation. These are all just proposals. These are not, these are not bills, or, you know, these are not, they're just the positions that help direct them as they, they go and advocate for the association. But as far as your specific question, I don't have any data on that at all.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is first, thank you for providing that. And I'm glad you did do it in a fashion where we didn't have to read every word of it, but you're the in-house expert on what we need in terms of questions. So I'm not hearing any excessive heartburn from anybody. Dr. Mason?
Well, I'm not gonna say necessarily just major heartburn, but I'm, I'm back to the attendance piece. I think it needs to be possibly reworded, only because if kids aren't in school, it may be, they're not in school for a reason. And we need to see why they're not in school, because if we plan to educate them, we need to make sure they are in attendance. And I think schools need to be held accountable for some of that. And not just write it off as a minority population or at-risk students. You know, we just can't write them off. So I think we, it has to be reworded just a little bit.
I will tell you what I will do, you know, because this is just the new positions. What I need to do is look through all of the current positions that are still active and see if there's one that supports this one or supplements it in some way that might address your concern. Because, I mean, this is not a new topic. We, like I said, we've, we've talked about the, the importance of if you're gonna learn, you've got to be present.
Correct.
So let me, let me look through the other current positions. And then I will, I'll get back with you on that one to see whether or not there is one out there. I'm, I'm assuming there is.
Does that work for you, Dr. Mason?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks again, Mr. Kilgore.
Mr. Kilgore, I, I think we all agree with all these. But as you talk to folks, please, on the education of teachers one, the one at the bottom that says a comprehensive evaluation of initial teacher requirement licensure renewal, particularly in the light of piecemeal accumulation of legislative mandates for new licensure over time. I couldn't go get my license renewed right now because I have to prove I can do an interactive website or God knows how many different piecemeal things they have added. They add a different one every year. And, you know, that's kind of silly. And while they're doing it, they need to reevaluate the praxis requirements because I know I lost a wonderful native speaker, Spanish instructor, because as an adult, to, to career switcher, she couldn't pass a math praxis because she really didn't want to go back and relearn her algebra and geometry at 40 years of age. And she was an excellent teacher. And it's ridiculous to have that as a requirement for somebody who's teaching high school Spanish to pass a math praxis. And they need to look at the whole testing issue for teachers as well as SOL testing for, testing for, for kids.
Okay, point noted. And Mr. Kilgore, you got that right?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item 6.02. Are there any questions concerning that under deliberation? Dr. Cagiano is here to answer all of those. 6.03, any questions about policy IGBI from board members? Yes, Mr. Karnak.
I wanted to ask a clarifying question about the testing accommodation section that has been added to the policy. I'm only asking this because I don't see any obvious verbiage that's, that would qualify this. Would, so are the principal and designee going to identify the possibility of testing accommodations on the SAT and ACT for those students who have English as a second language?
And you're speaking in reference to the proposed language at the bottom of page two?
Yes.
So which, which specific piece of that paragraph?
The first sentence, each high school principal or principal designee notifies each English learner of the, of the availability of testing accommodations for industry certifications, state licenser, state licensure, occupational competency, the armed services vocational substitute battery, and workplace readiness skills assessment. I, I'm not, maybe I'm not seeing it in the words, but is the SAT and ACT included in that range where they would notify?
You know, that's a good question. I, to be honest, I'm not familiar with accommodations on those assessments. So I'd be happy to look into that and provide some additional follow-up information. But for this particular policy, as far as V S B A suggested language, it did not come up in their recommendations.
And, and they may be very much more, more so college board-specific in terms of those accommodations.
I can certainly follow up with the board and, and take a look a bit deeper if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cagiano.
Sure thing. Good question.
Any questions for item 6.04, Revision of School Board Policy IGCA? 6.05, Revision of Policy IGAI? 6.06, IGAH? Any questions? 6.07, IGAD? 6.07, I G A D? 6.08, I G A G? Yes, Mr. Karnak.
So on page one, yeah, page one, bottom of page one, it says, or the language specifies that the Hampton City Schools will provide instruction concerning health, health and safety risks of tobacco products, nicotine vapor products, and alternative nicotine products. Could you give an example of what qualifies under this curriculum as alternative nicotine product?
Certainly. Joining me this evening is Ms. Pat Thompson, our curriculum leader for Health and Physical Education. And while she's up here, she would also like to address, in reference to the previous board meeting, there were some suggestions from the board, I believe, Madam Chair, in reference to parent input as far as resources, and so she has a, a resource that she's shared with Ms. Bowers this evening.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The alternative nicotine products refer to vaping, and vaping has become a huge, huge issue, and so instead of using the term vaping, they just say alternative nicotine products.
Okay.
Because that could expand into other things, so they just want to have one term for it instead of vaping, and then this, and, and other types of alternative nicotine products.
Okay. And is this, does it include recognizing advertising strategies that are geared toward youth tobacco product and nicotine product use?
We do have standards of learning to address that, and, starting in sixth grade. Regarding I G A I, the character education, we were provided a copy of the parent letter that we have drafted, and per your suggestion, Ms. Cherry, we did add a sentence about referencing if parents have concerns about their child and referring, referring them to the school counselors where they can find resources available.
I did see that, and that's item 6.05 for board members. Appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Okay. And that covers all the items under deliberation, and considering the information we're going to get from Dr. Cagiano regarding I G B I, these should be moved to action for our next meeting. Now, moving on to item seven, items for action, they include 7.01, revision of school board policy A C, non-discrimination, 7.02, review of school board policy B B B B, school board member oath of office, 7.03, revision of school board policy B B B C, student representative to the school board, 7.04, revision of school board policy B C G, school board attorney, 7.05, revision of school board policy C B A, qualifications and duties of the superintendent, 7.06, review of school board policy G C B H, early close, early release, 7.07, review of school board policy G B E C, working conditions, 7.08, review of school board policy G C B D G B, family medical leave, 7.09, revision of school board policy G D F, personnel records, and 7.10, revision of school board policy G C B D B, staff attendance, as well as, as well as 7.11, Second Amendment to Superintendent's 2017 contract. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, leaving 7.11 out, I move that the board approve 7.01 through 7.10 as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry, that the board approve items for action 7.01 through 7.10. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Is there a motion for item 7.11, Second Amendment to the Superintendent's 2017 contract?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Dr. Mason, that we approve item 7.11, Second Amendment to the Superintendent's 2017 contract. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Before we move to item eight, deliberation first read, let me speak to item 7.11, which was approved by the board just now, the Second Amendment to the Superintendent's 2017 contract. You will hear the many people, including Ms. Alanga, who spoke today, talked about the importance of leadership. And we know, and Dr. Smith, we have not only an excellent leader, but an excellent visionary, it doesn't matter whether you're looking at the academies of Hampton, which are not only known throughout the state of Virginia, but getting to be known throughout the nation, or whether you're talking about our dropout rate, excuse me, which is lower than that of the states, or our graduation rate, which is higher than that of the states. We, I think we all can agree that our superintendent is the CEO for this division, he runs it like a business, he has key people who are business-minded and making sure we do what is academically good and correct for all students in Hampton City Schools. Therefore, this board felt what would be more than appropriate to amend the superintendent's contract to reflect a change in his base annual salary, as well as his deferred compensation plan. So, Dr. Smith, we want to thank you and let you know, we do appreciate everything you're doing for Hampton City Schools, and the leadership that you have provided, especially when we talk about 100% accreditation of our schools, is not just a plan, but a roadmap for success as we move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as superintendent, let me say that it's a pleasure to continue to work with the board as members, as well as members of the divisional leadership team, along with the entire faculty and staff, inclusive our teachers and administrators and support staff, and our young people and the families that we serve, and this entire community. And so thank you so very much.
Thank you again for your leadership. Moving on, item eight, deliberation first read, it consists of item 8.01, revision of school board policy D G A, purchasing authority, 8.02, review of school board policy D K, payment procedures, 8.03, revision of school board policy J G, removing students from class, formerly student discipline, 8.04, revision of school board policy J F A, student due process rights, 8.05, review of school board policy E D C, authorized use of division-owned materials, and 8.06, revision of school board policy I G B C, programs for the academic achievement of disadvantaged students. I believe, Ms. Dort, you have the first two?
Yes, good evening. For policy D J A, minor wording changes, we updated the title for the city procurement director, and that was a five-year review. Then for policy D K, this was a five-year review as well, and we're recommending no changes.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions from board members? Okay, thanks. Again, I think the next two were, Ms. Hardy?
Good evening, I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Hardy this evening. I'm introducing two policies for revision for first read, and policy J G is first change, changing the name, now called removing students from class, formerly called student discipline. There are also minor language changes have been made to make the policy more consistent with the V B S A language and the Virginia Code. The definition of discipline has been expanded to focus on student behavior in its totality, rather than exclusively on the consequence. And this recognizes behavior as a developmental learning process, and it's really aligning to our work with socio-emotional learning, and also the initiatives that the state will be pushing forward with our change in the student code of conduct this year, so that we are responding in other ways besides punitive and exclusionary. The next policy is policy J F A, student due process rights. There are some minor revisions you will see, to include the addition of in-school suspension to extend those due process rights and protect the rights to appeal for any significant removal, again focusing on other things happening besides the exclusionary practices that could impact students' access to their learning. We have clarified how students and families are provided access to the rights and the responsibilities annually, in that now those, some of those are happening electronically.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from board members? Thanks again.
Thank you.
I believe the next one is yours, Dr. Bowlin.
Uh, policy, oh, good evening, first. Policy E D C is authorized use of division-owned materials. This is a simple five-year review, no recommended changes at this time.
Okay, thank you. And the last one is Dr. Owens?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Minor revisions were made to policy I G B C. The first paragraph simply reflects V S B A language and replaces no child left behind with Every Student Succeeds Act.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, we appreciate it. The next item of business is information. Our next meeting of the Hampton School Board, actually, we are going to have a community priorities workshop on November 14th at Fevers High School at 6:00 P. M. The next televised meeting of the board will take place on December 4th. Under the items 9.02, information, before I hear from board members, I had indicated that with Ms. Mugler went in a seat with Virginia General Assembly, that that would leave her seat with an unexpired term, and I said I would explain the process in the information portion of our meeting tonight. And of course, we all know that she's going to do a very good job, we're very proud of her, but this is leaving, as a result, an upcoming vacancy on the board. And in accordance with school board policy B B E, unexpired term fulfillment, we will now look to fill her unexpired term. Therefore, we will be accepting applications from qualified citizens who are interested in being selected for an interim appointment to the school board for the remainder of Ms. Mugler's term, which ends on June 30th, 2020. You will note that this board is committed to being very responsive to this community, and therefore, we are able to put in place for you our plan one day following the election. We had a friend of ours, who has become a friend of ours, his name is Coach Carter, who was the main character in the movie called Coach Carter, and he told all of us at a national conference, and that was to always stay ready, so you don't have to get ready. So we stayed ready on this one, and we are, wanted to make sure that we were not only ready, but that we were transparent in terms of how we were going to do business in filling Ms. Martha's, Ms. Mugler's seat. So therefore, here are the conditions. The board will only consider applicants who do not intend to be candidates in the May 2020 election. Now, while that may be obvious to most, let me just explain that the vice chair and I, Mr. Joe Kilgore, had a webinar months ago with the Virginia School Board Association on how you fill unexpired terms. Some terms may be unexpired because somebody resigns, others may be unexpired because somebody passes away, or other complications. Nevertheless, the process is the same, and it's a tight one. But in that process, the Virginia School Board Association made it very clear to us, one of the things they would suggest very strongly is that we do not fill the position with someone who is looking to seek election in an upcoming election, who is looking to seek a seat based on that upcoming election. And the reason is very simple. We do not want the board, and neither does the V S B A, want the board to give the appearance that we are given an unfair advantage to anyone. So that's why we are asking that the candidates who want to be considered not be candidates in the May 2020 election. To be considered for the interim appointment, applicants must be at least 18 years of age, a qualified voter, and residents of the city of Hampton. In addition, applicants must certify on their applications that they are not seeking election in the May 2020 election. The application form for the position will be posted on the school division's website. On the homepage, you will be able to access the application. There is also going to be an ad placed in our daily newspaper, so that people will know what this process is. So now I want to explain the timeline, because it is a short timeline. November 25th, 2019, all applications are due to the clerk of the school board, Ms. Bowers, by the close of business. On December 4th, 2019, the board will announce the names of the qualified applicants at its regularly scheduled meeting. On December 18th, 2019, a public hearing will be held to receive the views of Hampton citizens for all qualified applicants. And on January 15th, 2020, the board will hold a closed session to discuss applicants. Our intent is to announce the selected interim appointment to the school board at that January 15th, 2020 meeting. And on February 5th, 2020, the interim-appointed board member will begin their service on the Hampton School Board. As I said earlier, we will place an ad in the daily press, we will run in something on our TV station, Channel 46, because we do want this to be an open and transparent process. We will make sure that everybody is engaged, that needs to be engaged, which means our entire citizenry, and we want to make sure that everybody here tonight understands that this timeline is one that we plan to adhere to, and we look forward to the process. Any other comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Karnak?
Are you referring to general information, or about the, the process for filling the unexpired term?
Excuse me?
Are you referring to the process of filling the unexpired term, or just general informational items?
Oh, no, just general information items, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Anything else to come before the board in terms of information?
So I'd like to highlight, on November 2nd, last Saturday, the Warrior, the 29th Annual Warrior Classic Festival of Bands happened, it was a success. Thank you to Dr. Vivian Grease, the curriculum leader for Visual and Performing Arts in Hampton City Schools. I thank you to Mr. Kelly D., who's a teacher specialist for music with Hampton City Schools, Mr. Nicholas Conti, who's the director of bands at Kiketan High School, who hosted the competition, to all the band parents and band students themselves who helped make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That's always just an awesome event, yes, in this division. Any other comments or information items from board members? Yes?
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I just celebrated 20 years as pastor of First Baptist Church Jefferson Park, and I want to thank the board members who came out and celebrated along with my wife and I. We had a wonderful time, and I thank you so much for your support.
It was a great event, and I can tell you that, I'm not going to call the board member's name who could not leave the dessert table, but it was, it was a great event, we appreciate it.
Did I tell you how I met my wife?
See, I knew that was coming up. I knew that was coming up. At his, at his celebration, I, I did speak and, and inform people that on many, many occasions, Dr. Woodhouse reminds me how he met his wife. And I always have to say, yes, you, you've told me that about 20 times, so she's a lucky woman. Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
I'd just like to make an announcement, and also to congratulate the Lady Crabbers, the volleyball team, made it to the regional this past Saturday, and although they lost to Lake Taylor, they played a fantastic game, they lost in four sets, and this is the first time in the school history the volleyball team has made it to the, to regionals. And so I just want to congratulate that team, and I'm hoping next year they will make it to state.
That is wonderful. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Samuels, that is wonderful. Any other comments come before the board? We want to thank Ms. Mugler for leaving a hole on the board, but more importantly, we want to thank her for even serving a wider community. With that said, and no more business come before the board, we are adjourned.